This is a rebroadcast of the Eau Claire School Board Meeting. The audio for this program can be heard on WRFP LP 101.9 FM.
All right, I'd like to call to order the Eau Claire School District Board Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Leagions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary Iverson, have we complied with the Opens Meetings Law notification today?
Yes, we have.
Thank you. Could you do a roll call to verify the quorum?
Commissioner Spindler?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Cummins?
Here.
Commissioner Hambach Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Dux?
Here.
Commissioner Vu?
Here.
Commissioner Jean?
Here.
Great, thank you. Next is up is the public forum. I have for my President's Report a comment about the Veterans Day. I thought I would just do it before the President's Statement section. You know, a lot of people know, due to some, I would say unnecessary controversy around a TV story, the Superintendent and the Board would like to take a minute just to thank all of our schools for providing many diverse and educational Veterans Day events for our students. Our schools had events honoring veterans individually, presentations by veterans, choirs singing the National Anthem, the presentation of a veteran's quilt, and many more activities. And in fact, no programs were canceled. And in regards to the 21-gun salute and the Honor Guard, over the years, sometimes a school has hosted that and sometimes not. The Patriotic Council had approached a school and offered to provide a formal Veterans Day program, as has been hosted in other schools in some of the years, but the school already had an organized program that recognized veterans who associate with that school. So Burger King had offered and was contacted by the Council to have it there. Another school has a longstanding relationship with the VFW post and includes an Honor Guard as part of their program. The school houses a program to serve students with unique learning and behavioral challenges. Some of these students are highly sensitive to loud noises. In the past, these students were excluded from the full ceremony for that reason. This year, the principal working with the VFW agreed to have the Honor Guard but omit the 21-gun salute in order to have all children participate in the ceremony, which is a primary district theme, as in our vision. The schools and the Eau Claire Patriotic Council have worked together, planning a variety of events for many years, and we are very proud of our collaboration with veterans in our community and of the effort our staff and parents put into school Veterans Days activities. So thank you very much for everyone involved in that. So for the public forum, we have several signed up here. I want to note that we have a 30-minute time limit for public forum unless the Board extends the time. Each citizen is allowed four minutes to address the Board. And the Board will not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor about any person connected to the school district. So let's begin the public forum. When you come, please say your name and your address. So first signed up, I have Dave Anderson. You can come up to the, yes, to the mic there. And Jonah, if you could show them how to turn it on, that would be great.
My name actually is Paul Savetes. I think I'm third on the list, so I'm going to change your order slightly. The four of us are speaking on the same topic.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So if you don't mind.
Oh, sure.
So I'm Paul Savetes. I think the last time I was in this building was 1966, the last day of my ninth grade class. So it looks a little different than I was here a while back. I'm President of Jonah, joining our neighbors advancing hope. And there are four of us here that would like to talk a little bit about Jonah. And appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm a retired educator. I taught in Mondovy for 27 years, so I have a pretty good idea of what it's like to work in a school district and the pressures that teachers, administrators, school boards face over the course of their years of work. I'm here to tell you about our organization and to suggest ways that we might share some things and work together. First of all, I place at each person's desk our yearbook, so I'm not going to say a whole lot about Jonah. If you wanted to know more about us, just read about us. There's a wonderful picture, I think, on page three of me, in case you've forgotten what I looked like. So we are a grassroots organization, primarily a faith-based organization. There are 17 congregations in this community that are members of Jonah, but there are also some non-faith-based organizations that are members of Jonah, Labor, the Alliance for Strong Communities. And our goal, I think, is the same goal that the school board has and the members of this district have, and that is to make a stronger community, a community that's healthier and safer and fair for everybody. We're a nonpartisan organization. We like to work in collaboration with people. We are primarily, we begin by listening to people, by talking to people, finding out what concerns them, what issues they have. And so we begin always by listening. And we are also a relationship-based organization. We work by forming relationships with people, and we find that by understanding people, learning their self-interest, we are better able to work with people. And so that's what we do. We've worked in a number of areas. Primarily, we work with folks that are underrepresented in our community, issues relate to poverty, to incarceration, to addiction, drug abuse. As I said, I think we share a lot in common. We share many common values, and I think that there are opportunities for us to work together in this community. There's always plenty of naysayers around to tell us what we're not doing. But we find, as an organization, that by listening and by demonstrating a willingness to understand each other, that we can make progress. We can figure out ways that we can work toward common self-interest. So that's all I'm going to say, and I'll let other members of Jonah say more.
Great, thank you, Paul.
Hi, my name is John Stedman, and I'm also on the list. I live on South Loews Creek Road, and I'm delighted to be here, and I appreciate the opportunity. Many years ago, when I was a much better dancer and much better-looking, I was President of my school board up in Hayward. I know well what issues you deal with on a daily basis, and I appreciate all your efforts. It's hard, and it's harder today than it was when I was involved. You've got to be the cop, you've got to be the social worker, you've got to be the health worker, and educators are asked to do more and more with less and less resources. And everything is crunched, and it's, when things are like that, there's a lot of stresses. And so I particularly appreciate your willingness to serve in this sometimes thankless kind of work. Now, Jonah was recognized last month by WEA Trust in the Wisconsin League of Municipalities for having one of the best presentations about what they call the Spark Initiative, something, a simple idea that we could bring to our community that would have profound, rippling effects. And here's, I want to invite you guys and your educators and your students especially to participate in this, if you see the wisdom behind it. The Spark Initiative is really a simple idea. It is allowing especially young people, and by young, I don't mean room to grow, which would include me, but I include people under 30, which would certainly include the populations at Eau Claire schools, to take pictures with their digital devices that were forever telling them to turn off, don't use, put on vibrate, and to take pictures of places in the community where they feel safe, places in the community where they feel safe. I did this, did this, a pilot project in Chippewa Falls with an alternative program with juniors and seniors, and they took places in their school where they felt respected. And the results were profound. Jonah is about creating space and place for people to exercise voice and to participate in the decisions that affect their circumstances and their daily lives. Engaging young people is one of the struggles. You talk about how do we get these young people to turn out? And so this is a really simple idea that gives voice to students. And we take these pictures of safety and perhaps places where we don't feel safe, and we're going to create maps of safety in our communities, in our schools. And then we're going to invite students to come and sit down across the table and at the same table with administrators, with law enforcement, with human services people, and we're going to deepen our collective understanding of safety. So I'm going to pass around a piece of propaganda and invite you. We're having a planning meeting this Saturday at First Presbyterian Church on Rudolph Road from 10:30 to noon, pizza served for those of you that are motivated by food. And this is going to be a planning meeting to put some of the logistics and parameters around what this SNAP project, Safer Neighborhoods Action Project, will look like. Thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you. Sounds great.
Hello, I'm Joyce Anderson, 4334 Heartland Drive West, and I am a retired educator from the Eau Claire Area School District, as well as a member of Jonah. In Jonah, we agree that faithful economics and healthy communities are absolutely linked. I applaud your work as Board members in struggling with the issue of just how to provide fair compensation to a staff that is also fair to your employees as well as the community, especially now with shrinking state support. This issue is very close to my heart, or I should really say, close to my gut, because in the year 2000, I was diagnosed with colon cancer and also an autoimmune disease that affected my liver. My compensation from this school district included sick leave, disability insurance, as well as good health insurance that allowed me to see specialists. Because of health insurance and a fair salary, in the midst of this crisis, unlike many in our community, large medical bills did not force my family to sell our home. Both of our children were able to continue their education and graduated from college without a huge debt. Although the school district was wonderful in providing support and meals, the fair compensation I received from this district prevented my family from relying on charity or government subsidies. I might not have my colon anymore or all of my liver, but my dignity has remained intact, and I have felt valued. During my illness and recovery, what became very clear to me is that a community is like a large art mobile hanging from the ceiling. When one piece is affected, every other piece is affected as well. As the fourth-largest employer in our Eau Claire community, your decisions affect many, many people. I am here to remind you that fair compensation helps build not just healthy staff members and family members, but a healthy community, which I am most grateful to be a part of. Thank you. And now I'd like to introduce my husband, Dave, who lives at the same address.
Great, thank you. Go ahead, Dave.
In case you missed that, my name is David Anderson. I'm a retired pastor, a member of Jonah, which we now know stands for joining our neighbors' advancing hope. Call this an appreciative reflection. About five years ago, I spent a month visiting partner congregations and teaching in Malawi, a small, very poor country in East Africa. While I was there, I was often approached by young people, frequently young women with small children in tow, asking me to help them find money so that they could attend school. They were sure that their lives and the lives of their families would be better if they could get an education. At one point, the dean, a supervising pastor over a group of pastors, sat down with me, and he asked me, "Is it true that education, including high school, is free in America?" I responded that that was true, and looking incredulous, he said to me, "How is that possible?" I told him about taxes. I explained how property taxes and income taxes worked, and looking at me very wistfully, he said, "I wish we could have taxes here like that." I'm sure you often hear complaints about taxes, but my experience in Africa taught me that taxes make strong and thriving communities possible. Taxes help us look beyond ourselves and our own wants to what we can and must do to make our community a healthy, fair, and flourishing place. What you do with tax dollars enables us to not be just me, but us, a community. Taxes enable us to join our neighbors to advance hope for the whole community. And so I thank you for the stewardship of the money that you receive, the gifts that come from our community, the property that comes from our community that you use to make this a good and healthy place. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and it's a nice pleasant surprise here, Jonah coming. And I want to say, if, you know, on the initiatives you mentioned, contact the Superintendent's office, and she could refer you to the schools or whatever that might be interested. Okay, that would be perfect. Thanks. Next on the list is, we have Steve Boyle. Can you hear Steve? There you are in the back.
Hello, and my name is Steve Boyle. I live at 1822 Crestview Drive. Came here with my notes, but I don't like notes, so I had the honor of being at the DeLong Veterans Day. It was a fantastic thing. It started out with the band playing all the Army, Air Force, Navy songs and, what's that, the fourth one?
Marine Corps.
Oh, yeah, Marine Corps, yeah. I always forget about those Marines. And after that, they had eighth graders come up and read about their grandmas, grandpas, aunts, uncles, who were in the service, and their stories. And after the songs and after the reading, there wasn't a dry eye in the place. It was fantastic. So I just wanted to thank, just Tim's here, Principal of DeLong and you guys. It was a wonderful thing. I was at one before when my girls were there in grade school, and this one was just as good or better. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Ron Martin. I don't know, he's got a stack of things there. Let's see.
A little history. Ron Martin, 3390 Beverly Hills Drive, and also the Chair of the Eau Claire Patriotic Council, and I've served in this position for, I'm trying to count, but it's, I went to a meeting and was accidentally elected secretary, and in that same time, the Chair and the Vice Chair both moved out of town, and I was ushered in as the new Chair. And I served in that role as, I went representing, you know, the Eau Claire Area School District because of the partnership that goes back to 1933 with the Eau Claire Patriotic Council. And I'd like to introduce also Kay Olson. Kay Olson is the Vice Chair of the Patriotic Council. She is a veteran, she is a Marine, she is also the Gold Star Chapter President for Eau Claire and for the state. She lost her son Andrew in Iraq in what year?
2005.
2005. And so she and I have become very close over the years in our planning and our preparation for both the Veterans Day program as well as the Memorial Day program. And Kay had the fortunate opportunity to be interviewed, and unfortunately, that interview went the wrong way as far as what was used by the media to be able to report what was really going on. And I'm here to tell you what was really going on. I think you know that, but I think the community also needs to know how important the relationship is between the Eau Claire Patriotic Council and the Eau Claire Area School District. You heard a veteran speak just minutes ago about his experience at DeLong, and that happens all over this school district. I understand over 17 sites had something specifically planned and prepared for Veterans Day, and that's the goal of the Patriotic Council. The goal is to promote patriotism in this community, to promote what it means to be a veteran, and to experience a veteran if you don't have one in your life. That's the purpose and goal or part of it of the Patriotic Council. That being said, our work is really, we don't have to do much with the Eau Claire Area School District because you're already doing that. You're already doing the Veterans Day programs. I taught at South Middle School for 22 years in three or four months. We put on a program there every year as well. And the eighth graders were involved, and sometimes the seventh graders, our student council, they were responsible for planning it. And that's where it really starts, is with the particular group that you work with in the Eau Claire Area Schools. So if we contact a school, like two years ago, or a year ago, it was at Robbins, Kay worked with the partnership coordinator to set up the program. And we usually provide to each of the schools, they get this from the United States Department of Veterans Affairs, a sample on what you should be doing for Veterans Day in your schools. And in this, it talks about what could be included in a program. You could have posting of colors, you could have a prayer, you could have an invocation, you could have a benediction, you could have a keynote speaker, you could have a patriotic song, you could have kids talk about what veterans mean, you could honor veterans. Nowhere in this suggestion is a firing squad or a 21-gun salute. This is from the United States Veterans Affairs Office. And this is received by every single principal in the United States. Every single principal receives this. They used to send it in a book to every school. Now I think it might just be electronic. They receive it electronic. Who is the Patriotic Council? It's representative of the American Legion Post 53, American Legion Post 53 Auxiliary, American Legion Post 550, and American Legion Post 550 Auxiliary, the Boy Scouts of America, the Eau Claire Area School District, the Eau Claire County Veteran Service Officer, the Eau Claire Fire Department and Honor Guard, the Eau Claire Police Department and the Honor Guard, the Girl Scouts of the United States of America, the Northwestern Great Lakes Region, the Gold Star Mothers, the Order of the Purple Heart, Post 550, the SUNSE, the American Legion Post 53, Veterans of Foreign Wars, Altona Post 10405 and their auxiliary, Veterans of Foreign Wars and Auxiliary, Post 305, Veterans of Foreign Wars and Auxiliary, Post 7232, and the Western Wisconsin Chapter Number Five of the Vietnam Veterans. All of those groups were present, or most of them were present, at the meeting when we discussed all of what occurred. There was no Veterans Day that was canceled, contrary to the media. It did not work due to scheduling and due to other unforeseen complications related to the tardiness on our part in making a contact with the school, as well as the school already having something planned and ready to go. I have attended every Veterans Day program in Eau Claire since 1998, except this year's. Since 2000, I have been a part of the planning of every single Veterans Day program. I think perhaps clarification of what the role of the Eau Claire schools and the role of the Patriotic Council is when planning the program is in order. Our history in planning the Veterans Day program is as different as each person sitting in this room. Early on, the program in the 1930s consisted of a short gathering around a flagpole at the Eau Claire High School, which was on the other side of the river. Later on, right here in this very building, when it was Central High School, they gathered around the flagpole. There was a prayer that was said, the students came out, veterans were honored, and then they came back in and went to class. After that, there were several years when the program was a parade that included patriotic organizations in every single one of the schools referred to as the high school, the junior high school, and several elementary schools identified by the ward in which the school was located. Prizes were given out to the school with the best participation. And then in 1960s, the program was altered to include an indoor ceremony, and in the 1970s, there was a real push to include an outdoor portion of the program centered on gathering around the flagpole, especially to honor those returning home from Vietnam. Each program varied in what it included. Some included an invocation, and others did not. Some included a tribute to the dead through a moment of silence, playing of taps, and an Honor Guard. Some included a firing squad, and some did not. The Patriotic Council has had its challenges in the last 25 years, declining membership and loss of revenue from the city and county budgets. When taking office as the President, I was challenged with weak participation from the organizations that make up the Council, as well as the loss of all revenue from the city and county. There were challenges, these were challenges I accepted and confronted head-on. And as of 2014, we're proud to say that the Eau Claire Area Public Schools have fully embraced Veterans Day and hold some sort of activity honoring the veterans of our community and our nation. Since I've taken office, we have, when it has worked out due to scheduling, worked with one school who has hosted our Patriotic Council Veterans Day program. This year, due to several different situations, we, the Patriotic Council, was not able to adequately secure a host for Veterans Day 2014. And I must tell you, it was not because of a lack of trying in either the school district's part or the Patriotic Council's part. It occurred, as a matter of fact, several occurred in this school district. A local business opened up its doors for the Patriotic Council, allowing us to be able to gather around the flagpole at precisely 11 o'clock to honor the 11th day of the 11th month of the 11th hour, the ending of the Great War, the war to end all wars, World War I. Perhaps some would like to believe that this occurred because we were not allowed to have a firing squad participate. That is simply not the case. We weren't able to work a schedule in any of the schools, and thus, we never had a program planned. So you can't cancel something that never existed. But let me clear something up. We haven't always had a firing squad at our Veterans Day program. When we work with the schools, we share with them a packet that I had shared with you earlier. It is up to the whole school to decide what they want included in their program. The Patriotic Council serves as a resource in the planning. We provide past programs of which they will get to see what has been done at other schools. For example, in my packet here, I have programs from 2003 and 2013. In 2003, the program was held at North High School, and they chose to have a firing squad as part of the program. And in 2013, the program was at Robbins Elementary, and they chose not to have a firing squad. There are lots of reasons for this. For those not in education, completing an inside program and having your 11th graders and 12th graders head outside is really not a big deal. But in an elementary, in November, getting the four- and five-year-olds bundled up and outside, it would take the entire program. A local site has to have autonomy and the ability to make decisions that affect and will affect their school. The program planning is left up to the site, and we, as a Patriotic Council, honor the decisions made by the hosts. I am proud to know that our Eau Claire schools are not only working collaboratively with the Eau Claire Patriotic Council, they planned an exciting day for our veterans. So on behalf of the Patriotic Council, we want to say thank you for your work, and I have to just give one other shout-out this year. We had four students pass out at Memorial Day because of the heat. They marched that entire parade, stood in that hot sun during the program, and four of them, down they went, but didn't affect the band director. She went right on, parents came over and pulled the kids off, and an ambulance showed up, pulled one of the kids away, but they kept going, just like they were told to do, and they were just wonderful. So we certainly appreciate it. And what I brought with me was, you know, because I had somebody call me and challenge me on protocol and what should be included and what should not be included. This goes back to 1933, the very first records of the Patriotic Council. So if anybody would like to ever read them, you're certainly welcome to do so. It's interesting to see which of the wards always won the prizes at the parade. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your collaboration and partnership.
Thank you, thank you both very much. I appreciate that. That's great. I just love history. So that's it for public comments. Next on the agenda, we have the Superintendent's Report. Go ahead.
Well, as we do each time, we will review the calendar for the Board, and you have a number of activities that are coming up over the next week or so. Tomorrow, there will be a Board Committee, the Charter and Choice Committee, and that will meet at 4:00 PM here in the Administration Building. On November 25th, and please note that this is a change in date, at 7:30 AM at City Hall, there will be a meeting of the Joint Commission on Shared Services, and some of you are members of that committee. November 26th through the 28th, all schools are closed in the observance of the Thanksgiving Day break. On December 1st, at 10:30 AM at the Administration Building, there will be a Policy and Governance Committee meeting. And that evening, at 7:00 PM, there will be a school board meeting. On December 2nd, at 4:00 PM, there will be a Gifted Advisory Council meeting. I do have a couple of congratulations to announce tonight. I do have a couple of congratulations to announce tonight. Five individual members of Norris Golf Team have been named to the Academic All-Star Team for Girls Golf. Memorial State Championship Cross Country Team had eight students named to the Academic All-State Team. And students are nominated for these awards by coaches if they meet the following criteria: a cumulative grade point average of at least three-point-two-five, participation in at least seventy-five percent of their events, and are at least a sophomore in high school. And then I also want to congratulate Tracy Tumaniacs. She is a fifth-grade teacher at Mann's Elementary School, and she is the recipient this year of the Wisconsin Farm Bureau Ag in the Classroom's Outstanding Teacher Award. Each year, the Wisconsin Farm Bureau Foundation recognizes a teacher for their efforts in educating students on the importance of agriculture. Teachers of all grade levels and subject areas, with the exclusion of certified agricultural education instructors, are eligible to apply for this award. The Wisconsin Ag in the Classroom Coordinator, Wendy Canal, said Tracy does an exceptional job of infusing agricultural concepts into her curriculum. She wants to make sure her students understand and appreciate the importance of agriculture in our society. With her enthusiastic approach of using hands-on activities and real-life examples, she has done just that in her teaching. Tracy received her BA in Elementary and Middle Education from Viterbo University, a Master's of Education in Professional Development from the University of Wisconsin at La Crosse, and her principal licensure from Viterbo University. She has taught in Black River Falls before coming to Eau Claire. She will receive, as the Wisconsin's nominee, five hundred dollars towards attending the National Ag in the Classroom Conference in Louisville, Kentucky. So we congratulate Tracy. This is a very nice honor, especially since this is the week that we celebrate National American Education Week. And this goes from November seventeenth through November twenty-first. This observance of this week continues a longstanding tradition that marks a celebration that began nearly one hundred years ago. And the National Education Association and the American Legion joint efforts to set aside a time to emphasize education because of concerns about the illiteracy rate across the country, as well as a perceived lack of physical fitness among draftees during World War One. And the goal of having such an observation has always been to raise public awareness of the importance of education, particularly public education. We know that many of our staff choose to work in schools in order to make a difference in the lives of children and as a way of giving back to our community. And I think that these efforts are noted and appreciated by our community. In the last two years, when we've done our K-12 family engagement surveys, the number one thing that has come back to us is that parents express their appreciation for the kindness and care of our teachers and other staff. And we believe that our teachers and our staff are making a difference. So as we observe American Education Week this week, I hope that you will take a few minutes to reflect on the influence that teachers are making in the lives of our students, and the difference that all of our employees make in the quality of the experience that students have in our schools. And I hope that each one of you will take a few minutes to reach out to an educator who made a difference in your life, and to thank them for the difference that they made on you as a young person. Thank you.
And I would second that. Thank you very much. For the rest of my president's report, just a few announcements. December first is the first day for candidates for the school board to circulate nomination paper signatures. There are two positions up for election this year, and the terms are for three years. You can see our business office, Room one-thirty-two, I believe, to learn more and to obtain nomination papers. And the notice has been put out, I believe, for that. Second announcement is the, oh, did you have, I just like, the National Association for School Board Annual Conference is March twenty-first through twenty-third in Nashville. If any board members are interested in going, contact Secretary Iverson. She's reserved three hotel rooms for the three people who might be able to go. And the Wisconsin Association of School Board Annual Conference in January in Milwaukee, that's open for registration. And I think it's, if you can correct me, right, Secretary Iverson, it's until the end of this month, basically, early December? Yeah, okay. So if you want to go, you should contact her relatively soon about that. And finally, just a reminder, there's the Eau Claire Chambers Ag issues this Friday morning at seven A.M. If you want to sign up for that, I believe you have already. So that's it for your announcements. And now, if we could have a student representative report. Go ahead, John.
President Spindler?
Yes.
Related to the election announcement, I just want to be upfront that my position is up for election, and I do not intend to run, so I would encourage people to talk to, you know, friends, neighbors, community organizers, anyone who you think is intelligent and opinionated, and encourage them to run.
And cares about schools. That would be nice, too. So thank you, thank you for that update to us. Go ahead, John.
All right. So about a month and a half ago, about a month ago, you guys agreed on a resolution for the student passes. If you brought in a student pass, you can get into any athletic event. And at the end of it, it was added that it wasn't just athletic events, it was also events, any memorial or North High School events. So some concerns have been brought to me about the idea that it was, that it's not just athletic, that it's also art and theater and music events. So what's been going on is, there's a school musical at Memorial this coming week, and funding for it isn't, hasn't been, we don't, we've had to take funding out of our normal theater budget and put it towards this, so we haven't had funding. And since we don't, we're not going to have the people paying for the events because of this new pass, it's going to be difficult to fund this event as a whole. We might have to get rid of the fall, or the spring play that we normally do because of this. So some concern from like the art students, the theater students, and the music students that we had was this idea of the athletic pass was really, the idea, they came to a conclusion about it without conferring with the other departments, and it really impacts more than just the athletic department as a whole. And I think it'd be important for maybe the board to look over the resolution you guys passed and just address these unforeseen problems that we, that you guys couldn't have accounted for originally, because frankly, the choir department, the music department is losing money and funding that they rely on in these tickets that they sell. So, yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. So that one item, that's the end of your report? Do you have more?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know, do you guys have any questions for that?
Uh, well, as for a report, we usually don't take back-and-forth questions here, but I don't know, Superintendent, do you just want to look into the finances of that or what?
Yeah, we can certainly look into that and talk with the Athletic Council.
All right.
Maybe I'd recommend just having the athletic directors maybe talk to the music departments and the art departments and the theater departments, just to make sure that a comprehensive resolution is made, rather than just one.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the heads-up. All right, other reports, board committee reports. I think there's only one this time, Demographic Trends and Facilities, I think is the only one. You were going to do that, I think? That's what you said at the end of the meeting, so go ahead.
So the demographics, Demographic Trends and Facility Planning Committee met, haven't met for quite a while, so reviewed the purpose of the committee and the guiding principles, and then got an overview of the demographics as far as where enrollments are for the different schools in the district and at the different levels, kind of updated, you know, where we are now compared to projections. We did recommend, as a committee, to get an Applied Population Lab update. There is, you know, a small fee for that, that hopefully there's a budget for, so that we can get a updated projections. The last one was based on the 2010 census, and so I think the further out you get from those projections, the less accurate they are, and looking ahead to, if there's some recommendations to be made, needing to use solid numbers for that. And then we also had an overview or a reminder of the different sorts of referendums and the timelines associated with that, as we talk about whether there's some facility issues that we need to make recommendations on, understanding the different referendums. And set another meeting for December tenth and the agenda for that, so I guess that's about the summary.
Great. And I would just add, the group seemed pretty enthusiastic to meet again. It was a good discussion, so. Uh, great, and I am correct, I believe there's no other committee reports? Okay, don't want to miss any. Okay, a legislative update.
Good evening, everyone. I woke up this morning to the Leader Telegram, and on the front page was Wisconsin Legislature and a report about the upcoming budget. And so I took the information, and I cross-referenced it with WASB dot.
Eric.
And this is, and so there's three points within the budget that the GOP is eager to pass on education measures, and I thought I would report on those tonight. Okay? Is that okay to everybody? There are three pieces within their budget. The first is accountability. This measure sank the last session due to concerns from the legislature about how to sanction failing schools and test private school students who are using taxpayer-funded vouchers, so they can be compared with their public school peers. That's seemingly going to wane now, because a draft of a bill is already being drafted and passed around the legislature. Supposedly, the school accountability bill will not put sanctions in state law, but would create a council under the Department of Public Instruction that would determine the criteria for punishing lagging schools and rewarding high performers. That's the language I took from the article put in by the Associated Press. The bill would allow voucher school students to take a different test than those in public schools, with the scores then being aligned so that they could be compared on the report card. So that's kind of where that sits now. The other piece of the legislation is to expand vouchers from the a thousand students statewide to nine thousand, but a quote from former Assembly Speaker Scott Jensen, who now lobbies for the American Federation for Children, a pro-voucher school choice group, said that they would like to do away with that lid completely. And the third piece of the budget has to do with, and I took the words from here as well, there will be a replacement for the common core state standards. And that's the end of my report.
Great, thank you. Very important topics for us here. All right, so next we have on the agenda our consent resolutions. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished background material of these already, or at a previous meeting, and these will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. But if a board member wants to discuss any item, they could ask to pull it. All right. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November third, 2014 meeting? A motion to approve the financial report of October 2014? A motion to approve the gift report of October 2014?
Pull that, please.
Okay. A motion to approve the bills payable of October 2014? And a motion to approve the Human Resources Employment Report? Okay, so we have motion for all of those except the gift report. May I have a motion? We have a motion from Commissioner Zhang, a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Duex. Okay. Could we have a roll-call vote on that, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambach Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Duex?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Zhang?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Oh, excuse me. Okay, so the gift report of October 2014 was polled. Did you have a question?
I just want to make a comment. I just want, when I look at it again, I just want to thank those that have supported our schools. That list is kind of amazing, and I'm always kind of humbled when I look through the list of the gift report, so I just wanted to bring that up and thank our community for supporting our school.
Okay, much appreciated. Okay, could I have a motion to approve the gift report of October 2014? We have a motion from Commissioner Cummins. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Vu. I think we need a roll-call vote for this one also.
Commissioner Cummins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambach Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Duex?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Zhang?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Great, okay. So now into our individual resolutions. The first up we have is the resolution authorizing temporary borrowing an amount not to exceed seven million dollars pursuant to a statutory section. The recommended action is the Board of Education approve the low acceptable bid as presented for the issuance of a tax and revenue anticipation note in that amount. Looks like Mr. Van De Water, you have a few things to say about it. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, just a couple of things. This would be the graph that compares last year's projected in the blue with the actual in the red, so you can see that while our projections are close, it's not exactly dollar for dollar. The interesting one on this one is right here. You can see the difference when tax dollars come in, you know, earlier than expected, then you don't hit the valley as deep. So strictly a matter of timing. If we look at, maybe it's just, yeah, there we go. If we look at this one, you'll see the same general pattern. Doesn't change much from year to year. This year, the low point that we're shooting for is seven million dollars, and this is a result of the bids that came in this morning at ten o'clock. For borrowing seven million dollars, the net interest amount is a little over thirty-two thousand six hundred dollars, or a net interest rate of point-six-one-seven-five percent. And that would be the Oppenheimer Company. Only received three bids. Baird's was a partial bid. They did not express an interest in the entire amount of the need, so, but we did send it out to the institutions that you can see there. And then finally, if we want to look at a history of, this is very hard to read, but you can see that in the past, the district has paid out a lot more in that interest than we currently are paying out because of the rate that we are getting today on those dollars. So those were the comments that I wanted to make, President Spindler.
Okay, great. Are there any questions from Commissioner Hambach Boyle?
Was, Dan, was it an unusually low number of bids that we got?
Beg your pardon?
When you send it out, do we usually get more people that?
The last couple of years, no. There's been a limited number of people interested.
Question, any other questions about it? Okay, ready for a motion to approve, if you wish to approve this bid as presented to us?
Second.
So a motion for Commissioner Duex, a section from Commissioner Cummins. Any more discussion? And again, I think we need a roll-call vote on this, considering the financial.
Commissioner Hambach Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Duex?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Zhang?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Next on our agenda is the five-year capital Next on our agenda is the five-year capital selected projects. And wow, Mr. Kramer's coming up. I'll just read what this is about. So he's going to present information to us on proposed capital improvements for the 2015-16 budget year. And the administration recommends certain projects be proposed that Mr. Kramer, be approved, I'm sorry, that will be presented by Mr. Kramer there. So we'll give you a chance to set up there.
Thank you. Three things tonight. One, the comprehensive plan, which is in the booklets that are at each of your locations. Secondly, the, this year's five-year capital plan and then a short report on the referendum completion for the board. Looking at the first document, which is a three-ring binder, if I could just take you through that quickly, this was instituted in 2004. It was meant as a tool actually for decision-making for the board. We were going through a period back then of closing several schools and we found that we didn't have, you know, good information available to the board. And at that time, we did a number of community forums, gathered information, listening sessions. And since that time, the comprehensive plan has been a model of that original document updated periodically as we need to. So just going through the index quickly, you'll see the first section and section two, there's an abstract, a little bit of history like we said about that. Section three talks about the resources and the things that we used to put together the original document and how we update it periodically. The board doesn't get this every year. It seems to be as an unneeded basis and, and different committees have used it as well. Section four is our demographic information. Again, it was mentioned earlier by Commissioner Johnson about APL and we are updating that information as, as we speak because it goes back to the 2000 census. So while some of the projections in this portion, you know, are current, again, as we get further away from those data points, you know, the weaker the information actually gets. Tab five is probably the meat of the comprehensive plan and that's the facility analysis. I would like to just say that all of the, the information, all of the analysis that's done here is in-house. It's our own staff that do that, to come up with the rating scales and, and all of the information that is provided here. There's a number of things on statistics of, of facilities, square footage, a little narrative on the history of the facility, construction that took place, site diagrams, and just a number of things that, again, help the board gather information if there is a need. Section six is the action plan. And again, that, to reiterate, is, is our priorities in buildings and grounds. There are some recommended actions to take there, but by no means are they locked in cement. So again, it's, you know, from our perspective in buildings and grounds. Section seven is some of the financing options, some of the things that we talked about during the last demographic meeting and, you know, pretty self-explanatory again on, on options and the way we can go. And then section eight, the last section, is the current five-year plan and the big plan. You know, it is in a hard copy for anyone who is interested to review. So if there aren't any questions on the, on the demographics or any of the other information There. That might be a little bit easier for, for everyone to see and to understand.
Patty, so you couldn't, just on his board docs, pull it up?
There.
On there?
Okay. All right. As you can see, we've really got a narrow focus this year in light of, in the center of the page there, 1.13 million being expended at South to finish that air conditioning project takes up the, the majority of our, our 1.6 million dollars. But that will finish the project this year and that's why we're recommending to, to get through with that. This is the fourth year actually of work there to complete that project and we're looking forward to having that one done. Other notables, the two roofs, Chippa Valley, Montessori, and Locust Lane, were both deferred from last year. And then there's a small project at North Woods, which is also a continuation project that was started last year to remodel some, for some special ed space there. So in a nutshell, that is the projects that are planned this year due in part to the, the large amount of money being expended at South. On the right-hand column, you can see not all of the deferred projects. If, if you looked at the large document, you could see that there was a million something that was deferred, but these are probably the most notable in our, our mind anyway. I'd like to talk for just a minute about some of the needs at North and the North Track. We repaired that this fall, but it's obvious after going through the repairs that we fixed the holes and the things that were there, but there are some large sections that are delaminating and, you know, we're starting to have some major problems there so that, you know, they're in a position where we're hopeful with, with the repairs we made that they can still host a meet, but that isn't foreseen yet. We'll see what the winter brings for us. It's kind of a tough time on, on surfaces like that. And when you have a delamination, the surface will actually start to roll up, so it becomes a tripping hazard and that's, you know, not in a situation that we'd, we'd like to be in. One of the issues that we have with deferring it this year is that if you defer it this year, you're actually, for students, you're deferring it for two years because we wouldn't be able to get at it until the following summer. So not only would you defer it for this spring, but if we don't do it till, you know, 2016, you're affecting two, two years of student play on that surface. So, you know, that's a big one for us and, you know, we wrestled with that versus the roofs. We could, it's a possibility and, and just because of the numbers there, that we could exchange those two items with the Locust Lane roof and continue to, to patch Locust Lane for another year and get that North Track done. But again, that, you know, is something that I thought we'd want to discuss tonight. So any questions on, on this year's plan?
Okay. Commissioner Duex.
First, I want to just compliment you for shuffling things so many times and getting it in a wonderful order, the best that we can do for 1.6 million. I look forward to a time when we can up that budget. I did want to ask about the North locker room situation. And we had that on the list a long time ago.
Yeah, it's been there. We, we did some, we did some electrical work there. We did some new lockers several years back and we did just a, a little bit of painting and fixing up in those areas, but we haven't touched that, the team rooms yet. They're still in need and they're still listed at, at North as a need, as our windows and a number of other things that are, you know, they're pushing us on that facility as well.
Commissioner Johnson.
Well, this is a perfect time to remind the community that there, we have a facility naming policy so that if somebody was inclined to sport athletics, perhaps they'd like to put the name of their favorite coach on a facility and donate the money to renovate it.
Who's going to do that when you're gone?
I'll take it on.
I have a question about the track. So let's say it becomes unusable next summer because of hazards. Where do they go for either practice and/or meets? Yeah.
In, in a lot of cases, they're able to practice on the facilities, but they wouldn't hold competition there. So North or Memorial's Track is fairly new. What we do there is then, you know, schedule it so that meets in the community are hosted strictly at Memorial for those periods. And that's what happened when Memorial's Track was in tough shape, that we couldn't host there until we did get it fixed.
Okay. So it is reasonable for them to practice at the North Track still?
Correct.
Okay. One other question then. So what is the condition of the Locust Lane?
Well, we patched it.
Just kind of compare them.
We patched it twice this year. We had leaks. You know, we're starting to see a lot of seams separating and things that are, that are just obvious when that section of roof gets to the point of needing replacement that we see. You know, it starts pulling away from the edges and the flashings and the tack bars and things like that because the rubber will start to shrink. And so there's just a lot of things that you start to see that have a cumulative effect on, I want you to do. Obviously, we fix the leaks when they're there. So, you know, I, I don't think we spent more than $1,000 there this year fixing the leaks that we did have, but we are seeing increasing evidence of, of that it's at the end of its life cycle. So there again, if we deferred Locust Lane, you know, I would plan definitely to do it next year. That would be the second year of deferring that and then, and then move forward on, on at least the North project. But there's a number of other ones that are deferred out there as well that are coming. And, you know, as far as roofs go, we've got, several years ago, we fixed Lakeshore Elementary. We're hoping to get another five years out of that before we replace that entire roof like we did at North Woods last year. And then we've got North Star that's coming up behind us as well. So, you know, that's about a half a million dollar project alone there at North Star when we do that one. So we know that's in the, in the near future as well.
Well, I'm certainly willing to leave it up to your judgment. I'm not sure we're qualified to judge, but did you have a comment, Commissioner Zhang? Go ahead. Oh, sorry. Commissioner Cummins?
That was, as much as I appreciate all the information and it's always very detailed, I feel like that's your side of the fence and I would hope the board would be weighing in on which one. I mean, are you, are you really asking us or? Are you asking us because if you didn't ask, then we'd say, why didn't you ask us?
Because you're sitting on a fence.
Right? But I think we're saying, I mean, let's be honest. But I think this is true.
Historically, you know, we had, we had different plans at different times and one of them that comes to mind was, was the North Special Ed and Student Services area that the board weighed in on and, you know, we decided to change direction at this time of the year, which is great for us because now we've got time to move and to bid and to get those things out there. You know, if that's your desire here, that we, you know, repair and try to get that North Track done, you know, that's the way we'll go. We know that, that, that bid is pretty close there, even though we, we would rebid it if, in fact, we did go with both of the roofs this year. But we can certainly get bids and we bring them back to you anyway in April or May once we get everything done and, and make our final decisions on.
I think the difference is now our work is aligned with key work of school boards and it's very specific what's on our side of the fence. And this is your side of the fence? You can write it.
Commissioner Vu?
Well, I do want to say that we have to decide which one will cause the most disruptive for our students. The leaking or the sport? Which one will cause the most disruptive if you don't fix?
Well, I think there'll be more, more people affected by the track, to be honest with you, student-wise, you know, the people that are out for sports. A leak is usually, you know, one or two days till we can get it fixed if, at the most, if we have something coming in. So, you know, and those we move quickly on when we get roof leaks, we're, we're on them because we don't like buildings that leak.
Commissioner Johnson?
I think every time we hear Charlie's report on this, it becomes more clear that we, when we go to an operating referendum, that we need to increase his budget to adequately cover the needs each year. And I think his guideline has been a dollar per square foot and therefore we would need to increase his budget to approximately 2.4 million each year. And, you know, to get him to that point that that would be adequate, we also need to, when we go to a facilities referendum, to take care of South and some other needs that we need to, to catch up the backlogs.
Questions, comments? Thank you, Charlie. I think it's, it's just overwhelming when I look at the things on the right that we would like to do even just this year.
Yeah. And that's typically the way it is. I mean, if you look at, at the big plan that Patty had up here earlier, you'll see that there are some red numbers across the bottom and, you know, there's, there's between 1 and 3 million every year in requests that, you know, we feel are, are adequate for that year and legitimate and, you know, they don't get, you know, they don't get addressed. So that's how you get the backlog.
And for those people watching online, the total number is between 30 and 40 million of identified needs?
Yeah, 33, I believe, if I remember the numbers right, that have been identified. But, you know, there's 20 million about at South that's, that's there that, you know, we really don't have scheduled yet. We've just got that in the far right column, knowing that, you know, when we do something there, we're going to have to address those needs.
Commissioner Duex?
I was just going to comment that we're always in an emergency mode and so again, my compliments to you for managing this as best can be.
Okay. Okay. Good. So we need a motion to approve the proposed projects as presented for this fiscal year or something different. So do I have a motion of some sort?
Still moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cummins to approve this one. We have a second from Commissioner Duex. Is there any further discussion on the issue? Okay. Again, financial, we should have a roll call vote on this.
So just to clarify, they are on, the 1.6 million is the one that's part of the budget?
Yeah. So as, those on the left.
On the left side.
Correct. That adds up to 1.6 million. Those are the projects that we Those are the projects that we are approving. So, I assume you can later insert that as necessary.
Yeah. Okay. Commissioner Cummins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambach-Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Dux?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Jean?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much.
And then the last part is the referendum report.
Oh, yes.
And what I would like to do is, again, just briefly, give you an update on where we are capital-wise with that and those entire projects. Again, DeLonge, Putnam Heights, Robbins, and Sherman Elementarys. Putnam Heights, Robbins, and Sherman are essentially closed out, although there are a couple things that we're dealing with, equipment there, and trying to do some sound attenuation with some of the air conditioning units. So, that's still hanging out there. But overall, with DeLonge about seven eighths complete, not all projects closed out, I can report that we are about $100,000 in the black on that $52 million or 50, yeah, $52 million referendum bond. So, we're happy about that. A lot of credit goes to Larry Sommerfeld and, you know, the meticulous spreadsheets that he run and kept track of everything and controlled our costs, really, where we needed. We changed things. We added to, in some cases, after the bids came in. But overall, we're finishing in the black. So, again, happy to report that tonight.
Great, thank you. And I would say impressive part is not just being in the black, it's hitting the target pretty closely to what we needed to. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next on our agenda is the individual resolution regarding non-affiliated staff 2014-2015 compensation. The administration recommendation recommends the Board of Education approve a 1.46% base wage increase for the non-affiliated employee group for the 2014-15 school year. I don't know if we have any administrative comments on this or not. Probably not. Okay, do you have anything to comment on this? Or is it just the straight?
Well, it's just the straight 1.46, as the board's already aware. But I did put a note in front of everybody's spots to indicate that there was some miscommunication that the classified employee group had regarding the information that went out on board docs about this particular resolution. So, just to be clear, the action that the board is about to take doesn't have anything to do with the compensation study results and the base wage increase of 1.46 is the same as the other employee groups that are the classified group that's getting the 1.46. So, there was some communication in thinking that somehow the board was kind of bypassing the compensation study work and just automatically giving the non-affiliated group an increase in their wage based upon the report here. And so, there was clarification that I had with multiple leaders in that organization over the weekend, and then sent out the communication today to all of the employees in that group indicating that that was not the case and that it's the same base wage increase, 1.46, for everybody.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Johnson?
Well, just for the community's sake, 1.46% is a really odd number. That's the amount that we're allowed to give based on the rate of inflation, essentially. And so, all we're doing each year is not allowing buying power, I guess, to fall behind. It's not really any additional compensation, you know, when you look at the grand scheme of the things that people are buying with their salaries. And that's imposed on us, and the only way we can go above 1.46 is by going to referendum.
And it should be noted that that doesn't help pay for people's increased experience or professional development or anything of that nature. So, it is really just cost of living. Other questions, comments? Okay. So, I would need a motion to approve this increase for the non-affiliated employee group.
Still moved.
So, we have a motion by Commissioner Cummins. Do we have a second? We have a second from Commissioner Jean. Any other discussion about this? Okay. We can have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Cummins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambach-Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Dux?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Upstein.
Commissioner Jean?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. And very similarly, on the next agenda item is for the classified staff. And I'll just read the recommendation. The recommendation is the Board of Education approve a 1.46% base wage increase for the classified employee group for the 2014-15 school year. And this is a straight percent. Well, the other one was a dollar increase, a flat dollar increase for each. So, any questions, comments? I don't know if Ms. Marx, you have anything on this one? If there's anything similar? No? Okay. Commissioner Dux.
I move approval.
Do we have a second to approve the?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Vu. Any other discussion or comments on this one? Okay, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Cummins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambach-Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Dux?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Jean?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Great. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay. So, now we move on to adjourn to our committee reports here. So, the first is we have a policy 185 on board committees. We are, it looks like we are modifying. So, let's see if we can pull that up. So, here, there's no board motion needed because we're in committee as a whole now. But it appears that, basically, it was amended, the policy, to include the new committee that we have. Would either any of the policy and governance members like to say anything regarding the? Or is, I don't know if the administration does, but?
Well, I, we just needed, we have another standing committee that was voted on by the board, the Charter/Choice Programming Committee. And we needed to add it to the board committees in our policy. So, that's what we did.
Okay, and I, what did you have? Okay, I noticed that it looks like, basically, you just used the charge when we approved the committee to put in there. Okay, so it looks like exact wording. Seems pretty straightforward. Any questions or comments from board members before we do a first reading? Okay. Now, I don't know, historically, do you do a first reading of the whole new one or just that paragraph? Just the paragraph? Okay. Would anyone volunteer to do the first reading of that paragraph? Okay, Commissioner Dux. You can turn on your mic there.
Thank you. Charter/Choice Programming Committee. The charge of this committee is to provide guidance and recommendations to the school board relating to its role as authorizer of current and future ECASD Charter/Choice schools. This will encourage innovation that could increase our ability to provide diverse programming and methodologies. Through this investigation and advisement, the committee can support the increase in student readiness for and success in ECASD programming and post-secondary options.
All right, great. So, I assume the board is willing for this to move on to the next stage next time? Okay? All right, great. All right, so we have another policy to look at, a new policy, 662.3, on the fund balance. And let me just get to it here. Pull it up on our screen. So, I'll just read the major points in the report for the audience. The Policy and Governance Committee reviewed and discussed this draft policy with our business manager to try and develop a fund balance policy that would apply to our district, which I think is becoming more common in districts, if I understand it right. So, I don't know if anyone is prepared to discuss this. I certainly had some questions about it. But anyone want, I don't know if anyone has any comments before I do? No? Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
Well, it seems like somewhat after the fact. We clearly have identified these funds before, and it just seems like we're memorializing what has been occurring and just making some broad statements about fund balances in general. I mean, is that the case? Or is there a new issue that has arisen that has led to this?
Well, Mr. Vanderwater might want to comment on it, but I think he and we felt that it needed clarification so that we know that there are different parts of the fund balance.
Go ahead, if you have.
Right, it was, I thought that the current governmental accounting standards board break down for the different parts of fund balance be reflected in board policy so that it's clear what authority the board, you know, needs to take in terms of setting up some of these designations. You may never use all of them, but if you do decide, for example, to have a committed fund balance, the policy would guide you.
Commissioner Hambach-Boyle?
And I think we had some conversation about how this makes us just more transparent and that people will understand the fund balance in a more deeper way.
Okay, I had a few comments about it, just because I've been in a training on this and some other things. Could you pull it down a little bit further for me, Patty? Near the bottom, in the second to last paragraph, it says unrestricted fund balance. But nowhere is unrestricted fund balance defined. You have restricted fund balance. Does that mean all the others? Or do you mean unassigned fund balance? So, it doesn't match any of the definitions that are above.
Unrestricted would be synonymous with unassigned.
Okay, so I would suggest at least changing that to match the definitions above. The other thing is, I think the part about two-thirds majority vote needs to be clarified because you only need the two-thirds majority vote under the statute 65.905A or C, I think it is, when you're modifying your budget. You only need a majority vote if you're changing something with your balance when you make your budget. And I looked at another policy that's kind of similar to this at Conemaugh, and they clarify the difference in theirs. And I can share that policy language with you because that two-thirds is only needed if, after you've approved the budget, you want to modify your budget and modify those. It doesn't say that there. So, I think that might need some work there also. Does that make sense? And the last comment I had was, on the back, the next page, if you go down just a little further, it says, it's, to me, it, you can give me your opinions on this, it says maintain an unassigned balance, sufficient amount that avoids the need to short-term borrow. I just felt that felt, that just felt kind of soft to me. I know I've seen other policies where they give us percentage range that they want, you know, a fund balance to be in. And I don't know if you had that discussion in P&amp;G, and maybe you could clarify to me why you decided not to, or go ahead.
The issue that you have when you specify a certain percentage is that it is very difficult to maintain that percentage on an ongoing basis. The only way that you can increase your working capital or your unassigned fund balance is to have more revenue than expenditures. So, in the current environment with revenue limits and the struggles that, you know, this board and other boards have, if you had a certain percentage in there and you were below that percentage, what you would need to do is you would need to levy to the full max that you currently do on an annual basis under revenue limits, and then reduce your expenditures to provide for whatever amount of increase there is. Well, in the current, in the current environment in the state, and certainly in this board, in this district, you're up against the wall with the expenditures as it is on an annual basis, trying to fund all of the facets of your programs that you currently have. So, what you would be doing would be cutting back on resources for your existing programs in order to grow fund balance, which kind of is difficult to explain to the public on why you're increasing your, for lack of better description, savings account, you know, at the expense of cutting programs or cutting resources to program. That is a problem that you run into. So, by stating it this way, it is certainly softer than the hard and fast percent of whatever expenditure level or whatever you want to set it at. But it does give you flexibility. And really, if you can avoid short-term borrowing, it means, you know, the other, perhaps the other criteria for working capital, rainy day fund or whatever, you don't want to, you don't want to have too much in your working capital because, you know, that.
That was kind of my next question because I know, it didn't seem like there was an upper limit on it.
Right. Well, that's something that a board would monitor on an ongoing basis. You're not there right now.
Well, yeah.
It would take a while to get there, if you could ever get there. But this is what we discussed at the committee.
So, basically, you decided to leave it flexible, I should say, I suppose.
Right. And it does, it does provide, you know, for, the word strive to maintain. And the board will be looking at this on an annual basis. So, you can go from year to year and decide what you want to do.
Those are my questions and comments. Okay. So, the few changes I made, it sounds like a little wordsmithing needs to be done before we do the reading. Is that all right with the committee to go back to the committee just to do those? And I'll send you the wording that I had seen from the other one I'd seen. Okay? Great, thank you. Okay. So, McKinley Charter School Annual Report. I'll give them a chance to do that. So, this is an annual update on the school improvement progress
So, good evening. As most of you know, I'm Pete Riley. I oversee McKinley Charter School. As, if you were here last year, I did what was called a prezi presentation. So, we're going to do another one of those. But of course, it all depends on technology, and I probably should have logged in 10 minutes ago. So, what this is going to be tonight will be a brief overview of McKinley, the history, the components, a school improvement plan. And I'm going to touch a little bit on the homeless program that I oversee and the detention center down at the Northwest Regional Detention Center. So, I'll just start with a little history of McKinley. McKinley opened in 1996. Over the years, we've overseen, or it's included with five components on site out there at 1266 McKinley Road, is competency component and a credit component, two separate programs for kids, depending on where they are in their educational career. I also have a teacher in detention, in the detention center, actually, two teachers and an aide this year. One of my teachers up at McKinley go into the county jail four days a week to serve students in the Eau Claire County Jail, ages 17 to 21, if they do not have a high school diploma. Part of the program that we've picked up over the years is I also serve as a homeless liaison to the district. So, Dani Klaskus, whose name probably has come across the airwaves, really, she's the program coordinator, and I'm going to touch base a little bit on that. In fact, there's a bonus prezi at the end, if you'd like to see it, on the homeless program. Let's see, I've been at McKinley for about 16 years and love the work. I'm going to share a little, a couple of personal stories from McKinley student and parent. But I don't want to get ahead of myself because I have to get into my prezi, which won't take long. Which won't take long. I actually thought this meeting was going to go a little longer, and I saw I was like the last person on the agenda. So I did take like, I had four cups of coffee, so I didn't get tired. But it's only eight-thirty, so I think that might come back to haunt me. Yeah. Oof, see if that works. You saw it? I'm going to have to go in this way, but I believe, should be okay. Sorry. Oh, not necessarily part of that, but just the world of passwords and changing them every month and. Cross your fingers, there you go. Might as well save that one. I really haven't played with prezi since last year, so we'll see how this works. In fact, we're already stuck. And I do have some notes to go along with this. So the mission, as it currently reads at McKinley, is educate students for responsible behavior in their home, school, and community. And there's, there's definitely a background, there's definitely a reason why it is to educate for responsible behavior in your home, school, and community. And as I was putting this together and looking at the mission as we do and have posted around the building. I think to myself, there's a, there's real, there's a lot of different definitions of what you think is responsible. And it depends where you come from, what you believe in. And sometimes they're not always, everyone's not always the same page for what is responsible behavior. Honestly, for many of our students, education's not on top of the list. It just isn't, and that's one of the reasons why McKinley was created, is to open a new environment that students could reengage in their education. So I have a few things, like I said, I want to share that, that might, might give another perspective about our student population. It's kind of referred to as putting a face on our population. And one is an email or a Facebook post from a parent that we recently received. And one is a card that was handwritten, given to the staff, I would say, three, four weeks into school. But this first post is from a parent, and I'll try to get through it relatively quickly without losing the meaning. But it says, "To honor today and those who have helped, my son wanted to share a small part of the story, of his story. Not my kid, my kid, my talented, funny, outgoing kid can't be an addict. People in my neighborhood don't have drug problems. Children of teachers don't become drug addicts. Kids with ambitious ambitions and goals are too focused on their future to become depressed. Kids involved in scouts, church, sports, and clubs aren't suicidal. But mental illness and addiction are not picky. For years, my son battled depression, suicide, anxiety. Counselors, mentors, family, and friends, that should have been enough. Not if the illness causes you to disbelieve your own worth. Two and a half years ago, I made one of the hardest decisions a parent can make. I had my son arrested. I had seen the signs of drug abuse for years, but refused to believe things were that bad until I had to. And then I realized they were much worse. When I picked him up from jail, he was sorry, promised to change, assured me that he wasn't addicted, that he would stop. I so wanted to believe him, he wanted to believe himself. I convinced myself we could have handled this. For a while, all was good. I was so naive and no idea, not a clue. Fast forward six months, I saw the signs, but this time the things would be different. After the weekend, I would call someone. I didn't know who, but I would. I was stupid. I should have called right then. That weekend, an overdose, a disturbance, someone who was no longer my son, but had become the drug. Another hard decision, again, I called, knowing this time it could be prison for breaking probation. I had no choice. I couldn't help him anymore. The supports we had put in place were not enough. But he was lucky. He lived. Intensive care for two days, jail for three months, forced detox, then rehab. He was lucky. Others were not. In rehab, he became close with two people. They tried to support each other. Both were dead within the first year. He was lucky. Others saw the potential in him that I saw, that he was never able to see himself. And someone along the way, my son, and somewhere along the way, my son reemerged. Changed from fake it till you make it to I'm going to do this and I can do this. Embraced the supports that he had been introduced along the way, but didn't really see before. He wasn't ready to commit before, but the people who were always there for him had hope, so they waited until he wanted to share the hope. Fast forward two years. Today, October twenty-ninth, the anniversary of the day he counts as the start of sobriety. Two years awaiting, watching, hoping, praying, celebrating accomplishments, recognizing hard work and perseverance. Changing perceptions, damaged and rebuilding bonds with family, friends, and mentors, the people he had hurt, deceived. Most importantly, changing his view of himself, seeing his own worth, his potential, his value. Today is for recognition, two years, pride, happiness. His two-year badge from NA, a future. Second year of college, and he's the Weld Club president. Today, I woke up to cards that he had set up in the kitchen, happy tears, so grateful. We could not have done this without so many. The probation officer that believed in rehab over prison, the Fresh Start Program, his teachers, his girlfriend, friends, and family. That all held him accountable, listened, and supported. So I wanted to share that. It happens all too often where I work. I think what I take from that is the time it takes, the time it takes to help kids find their way and not giving up. And every one of the staff at McKinley have these conversations on a daily basis, not always at this level, but a lot of the time. So I wanted to share that because that's a very positive story. And I also realized that it was heavy, and so I'm going to lighten the load a little bit with another card. This is from a young, or not a young girl, a senior, I guess that came to McKinley, three weeks into it, to school. You know, fancy, pleasant, happy. And it just says, "I want to, or I thank you all here at McKinley Charter School for giving us all and myself such an extremely amazing opportunity to gain the knowledge necessary to achieve our diplomas at our own pace with McKinley. I can say without a doubt that I would not ever dream about having such unreal flexibility and patience from any other school enough to see a way out of being a high school dropout. Things and lives of others, including myself, sometimes put a little too much pressure on us and make it difficult to see a way out to a success. If I can do it, anyone can. I and my life may be difficult at times, but your school makes it a heck of a lot easier. So thank you." Again, it takes time and not everyone's there. And I understand that there's a fast-paced movement, high schools, and it doesn't fit for everybody. And sometimes we have to let some of these older young adults take the time to get there. So that, that's part of the mission, is to help let them also see what responsible behavior in their home, school, and community is. So, next slide. So two sites on, or two components onsite. One's the competence component and one is the credit component. I want to speak now of the competence component, which is by far the largest component we have there with, right now, a hundred and nine students enrolled. Again, this is for seventeen to twenty-one-year-olds that have less than twelve high school credits. And over the past few years, and I've said it last year and I'll say it again, is that we're trying to really move the image of McKinley to a place to, just to graduate. But a place to reengage and get ready for the next level of post-secondary success. And that leads to, part of the school improvement plan is improve the number of students. It should probably say increase the number of students successfully completing a program at CVTC. Over the years, we've talked a lot about data, and I always felt like I didn't have data to necessarily set a real smart goal. Over the summer of June, in June of two thousand fourteen, I do, I did receive some data from the Chippewa Valley Technical College. I think helped the staff, helped myself, helped district administrators look at, there's enough data there to, to, to make an improvement plan out of. Maybe before I change the slide, but some explanation of what it's going to take to, to reach that goal. And that would be continuing to work on this partnership that's from the district, McKinley Charter School and the Chippewa Valley Technical College. To put a process in place to support McKinley graduates at the tech school. We need to design and implement a college success and a stress management component for students at McKinley. Discussions have been in the works with counselors and staff at CVTC. And of course, the history and the experience that we all bring at McKinley to work with kids that are disengaged from their education. Three, increase student test scores on the compass exam. And we use different assessment tools at McKinley to, to find out what skill-building areas we need to help those kids with. Increase student involvement at CVTC, so they can build confidence and feel comfortable walking around and navigating the building. And we can do that through tours and possibly taking different college classes on there to partner with the Chippewa Valley Technical College. So those, those are the steps we hope to get there. And, and this is the data that kind of got, got us there is, the tech released to me some numbers last June that said, well, I knew this. Fifteen hundred students have graduated from McKinley since nineteen ninety-seven. Now, the tech gave me this, that six hundred graduates have applied to CVTC, sixty have graduated with a degree. And at that time, forty were currently attending. So that, that looks to me as if we got about eighty-five percent, I think it's more like eighty-four, eighty-four percent aren't finishing a program. So that's a concern, because the goal is to not just get them started, but to help them finish. And honestly, I don't know the number of just all other graduates that apply and don't finish. That'd be interesting to comparable. But again, the data, and, and I have another stat here is, I think, if you recall, last year, one of the goals at McKinley was to get these kids kind of, I guess, engaged in the possibility that they could be successful, is to have more kids take the compass test. Two years ago, in twelve thirteen, we had, we had the compass test installed, so we could help kids test onsite. We had three kids take the test in two thousand twelve thirteen. Twenty, twenty-seven students took the test last year, just onsite. So this is just showing them, we've had, I mean, just the look on someone's face that thinks they just have zero math skill. And let's say they were looking at a welding program that needed a thirty-five in a math, and they take it and they have a forty. And they thought they didn't have any skill. It's just great, because then you just springboard off that momentum and keep going. So this year, after first quarter, we have ten, I believe. So we're on pace to increase the number of kids taking the compass test too, or also. And here's just some data that I hope you can read. But just on the, the average test scores from our two thousand thirteen, fourteen students are right there, fifty-two point two, all the way across the board. And just so far this quarter, with some of the process we put in place to help kids prepare for the assessments. Has already shown a pretty good increase in, of scores. Of course, there's fewer numbers of students, so percentages are always, they're percentages. One of my professors said a percentage wasn't a real number, so. Which could bring us back to.
Do you have a question?
Yeah.
Is youth options ever an option for McKinley students where they can get that support? Or are the requirements out of reach?
No, I think the youth options is, is on the table, and it's definitely on the table for this discussion that I want to kind of move forward with the district on CVTC. It's a little trickier with, I think this is what we're working on too, is that the older students that are nineteen, but they're still going to high school. I think could be still eligible for youth options as long as they're enrolled in the district. And some of the younger kids in the, that may be sophomores, juniors, and seniors. Youth options is, I think, is an option, and it's hopefully going to be worked into the plan then.
Just kind of a follow-up on that, a little bit different.
Sure.
Do you, do you have a good idea of what students are doing who do not apply to CVTC or going to CTC? I mean, do you have a, any data on that?
Um, no. I tried to work with the, well, I did work with the University of Stout, and I think it was one of their research classes. And, and we tried to track down, because what we get, we'll get a lot of transcript requests over the years. And we've kept every request, piece of paper, six, you know, probably three floor binders. And so what we did is, at one point in the year, we went through and got every address and every phone number. And we ended up getting about, getting a hold of about a hundred people. And this would have been three years ago. And out of that, I want to say twenty replied back to it. And about all of the twenty had some sort of class after high school, but we didn't have great data on it.
Yeah, it's a difficult population to track and get a response rate.
Right, and, and I guess one other note I took that you reminded me of is, I, I run into students almost weekly, past graduates. They call, they stop in, and there's nothing but thanks. And, and they give me thanks, and they thank the staff, and they said, you know, you know, you all have probably kids too that come back and say, hey, you were right. That was good advice to get these ducks in row. But I don't think they get to this level. So I want to thank you on behalf of the families that thank me to be able to put McKinley up and run it. Because it is much appreciated throughout the community. So.
We have another question, could you do ask?
Well, I just wanted you to kind of explain how you get them into CVTC. And you have some special funding that has been granted by the foundation to do that. Can you kind of track that for us?
Well, and last year, a staff member wrote a grant up to a thousand dollars to help two students take CNA classes. And then we have actually, we've had donations come in to help students in other areas, so we had to use some of that for the books and supplies. But that was our first step in, in using some foundation money to write a grant, write a grant for foundation money to help two students go through the CNA piece. We've always, we've had, for a number of years, we've had a McKinley scholarship fund set up at, at CVTC that kids can access. And just some of the McKinley Governance Board work over the last two years is kind of trying to align that. So it's more available to the students at the tech. It's about login password and what comes up. So hopefully, we'll have more kids tap into that. Yep, Megan, Megan McCracken was the one that wrote the grant last year, received it, signed, got two kids going, yep. And I think she submitted another one this year. And I believe she will receive it, we will receive it. So another kind of big piece that I think is interesting, especially to this area and to this community. Is that, as you probably are aware, Eau Claire School District has the Northwest Regional Detention Center in their boundaries. It serves up to twenty-seven area counties. This, yeah, we serve twenty-seven area counties. Last year, we served two hundred and seventy-nine students. And I think I shared with you, last year was also implemented in different counties throughout the state. Is that you can start sentencing, assigning students to up to a hundred and eighty-day stay. Which now they, they've added that you can do those twice, so they could stay in your detention center for three hundred and sixty days. What's changed over the last two years is that then now we need to really dig into each and every student there to make sure their curriculum and their education continues them to get the credits. They're not all behind their class members and credits, but they will be if we don't wrap programming. So that programming is to, you know, we use online school. Some of our kids have attended North Memorial, some kids have attended McKinley. It all depends on a case-by-case basis, how old they. It all depends on a case-by-case basis, how old they are, what grade they are, how many credits they have, to keep those services wrapped around. And it's, there is a, we're setting up an open house, you would call it, at the detention center, on either, on the Staff Development Day, I believe in January, which I think is the 20th, but I can get more information. I think last year, a board member or two attended the tour. It's very interesting to see the setup of a detention center. And, and the reason why it kinda poses, because you'd have two sections, you'd have, because you only have about 10 kids in there that are there long-term stay. The other kids, the other, I'd say 14 kids are only there for three days, so it's a little different programming. And it's a secure detention facility, so you don't have pencils around, and kids don't communicate freely, very regimented. The other thing, yeah.
What percent of these students are coming from outside of our district?
The majority. I know that's pretty vague. I would say, are you talking to, out of like 280 kids totally served? I would say, just looking at spreadsheets and trying to think about how it's sorted, I would say less than 50 kids are from Eau Claire District. I, I can tell you this, and, and we can give some recognition to the staff developing this 180 program and the 360-day program, and it is looked on throughout the state as one of the better programs in the state. I, I've heard people saying, like, there's detention centers closer to their county, but they're paying Eau Claire to get their kids in the Eau Claire program. They were on the news a couple of weeks ago, it was on quite a few times. It was called the Underdog Program. If you saw that they were adopting dogs from Humane Society and having them go to a facility, and they didn't really highlight it was the detention center, but it was. The kids in this program were taking care of the dogs. And then they, I don't know, just, it's kind of a give and take, taking care of pets, and kids loved it. I mean, the response, because as you are in the 180 program, you kind of increase your level, so you have a little more freedom, so the kids that are starting to change their behaviors and improve their responsibility, maybe get to take the dog for a walk, which might not seem like a big deal, but it is if you're in a six-by-six, no windows cell. So that was, that was another huge thing that was on, I think, well, definitely on one of the TV stations. Any questions on that? We had a total of 28 students served on the 180-360 program last year. In this quarter, or through first quarter, we had 10. Running out of beds. So the last piece of my presentation is gonna be a little bit highlighting the homeless program. And again, there is a prezzy if, if we have time, or I can just send it to you. The homeless program. Interesting number is the first bullet. This year, we've already identified 157 Eau Claire School District students as homeless. Last year, at the end of November, at the end of November, we only had 99. So the numbers are up. Just some props there. I mean, all schools are doing things, but Danny shared this with me, that Delong collected 700 pairs of socks, underwear, and more gear for the kids in the program. I don't know if anyone heard, but through the month of October, Danny and I did a piece with Tess Morgan from iHeart Media to highlight the program, the needs of the program, and they did this, and it's not just, we didn't come up with this term, but it was called Socktober, where you donate socks and underwear and things for kids. And they did it with, every day in the morning, they, they, they offered their trucks that you see go around, Z100, B95, that anybody could drop off supplies for our program, so.
We have a question here for you.
Yeah.
Can you give me the definition of homeless for, that they're used for this?
Yeah, the first definition is that you're inadequate or unstable housing. Okay, and then typically, and this is where that prezzy would come in, they're in a shelter, could be a hotel motel, could be doubling up with relatives or friends, could be in an abandoned house, like, living out of their car. Some of the scenarios we've seen, living out of a car. That's about the four or five that fall into that. But the first thing you gotta think about is, is your student inadequate or unstable housing? It's a little different, if, the HUD definition does not include doubling up for economic reasons and unstable housing, and inadequate. You can see, so if a family of three move into, and maybe one's an infant, they move into a place and they're doubling up, and they're sleeping on the couch and the floor, and that, that would be considered inadequate.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I just need to put this plug in too about our program, because again, we've had this program for a number of years, 12 years, but, and this is from Dani Klasskis, again, Homeless Program Corner, but she did want us to, wanted me to point out that we continue to have a very strong working relationship with the following agencies, groups, and businesses. All, all of the Eau Claire shelters, the Community Table, the St. Francis Food Bantry, Student Transit, Shields, Play It Against Sports, Eau Claire City and County Housing Programs, Lutheran Social Services, Catholic Charities, UW Extension, Salvation Army, Western Dairyland, and Feed My People. She also commented and told me that we have had a record number of donations this year for our kids in this community and this, in the school district. And thanks to the help of everyone, all the, all the staff. And I know Patty does a lot of work down here, getting, taking in donations, and Danny comes and hopefully helps distribute them. That was, that was it, but open for questions and more data.
Questions, Commissioner Zhang?
I'm curious to see what the kids do do afterwards. I'm sure it's gonna involve money and a research facility somewhere, but that's something that I'll be very interested in seeing, maybe in the future, maybe not close, but whenever we're back to, where we're not in survival mode anymore. I would like to see those that, that did complete their program and don't choose to, to continue at CVTC where they do go.
Yeah, and even with, you know, more and more social media outlets and things, you can reach out that way.
I was just wondering if you could tell us things that you would envision to make the program more successful than, than it already is? Do you have some thoughts on where you'd like to go with this?
You know, I think if you look at the, the five components, I think where, where I want to go is where we're going with the older kids, and, and trying to build a stronger support system for kids to be more successful after high school. I think part, one thing down the road to keep in mind that we deal and deal out is, is like the letter that was presented from, from the Post, is that, and it's not just a McKinley issue, it's a, it's a school-wide, it's a community issue of the supports that kids need that are, that are really struggling, depression, mental health, AODA. And, and it's, it's a tough, tough battle. I mean, I've been here, I've been at the same place for 17 years. It doesn't get any easier, and I, I don't know the answers. And there's lots of community members that are on coalition groups that, that have these discussions. But I think some of the research says it's about building relationships and trust.
Commissioner Hamakboyle?
Pete, you know, I know they've talked about additional money for the mental illness piece in the governor's budget. Have we seen any of that, or has that affected any of the programs in Eau Claire?
I think, you know, where that, that kind of developed was, I don't know how many years ago, but the school-based mental health piece of the, of the district that's, Robin has been in charge of is, is definitely McKinley's part of the partnership, and, and they've been flexible enough to let, I know school-based mental health means we can get that mental health in the school, but McKinley, because of the size and the zero space and confidentiality of going into a, a room to talk to a therapist, wasn't there. All the, the people that we work with has, has opened up their doors to use their facility. And, and it's not about, it's not so much about efficiency, I think, at McKinley. It's about, you know, we need to, we need to get the help. So we, we have utilized that, the school-based mental health in the district.
I'm just curious about the financial condition of McKinley, how's that?
You know, I think we follow the same financial budgeting process as all the other schools. You know, when, when there's a cut in supplies, we, we do it the same way. I mean, that's, that's about what I know of it.
Okay. Commissioner Vu?
I'm just curious about the demographic and trends of the student population and number of students in a given year.
Well, onsite, we have two components. One's the competency that I spoke of with the older kids, 17 to 21. I mean, there's, there's somewhere between, I'd say, 125 and 175 students each year, served each year. Out of those kids, we graduate about 100. So we'll pull them back about 75, and then we get referrals from North and Memorial and Altoona, because we're in a partnership with Altoona, to serve kids in that component. The other component, which right now is 6th grade through 12th grade, is only got 24 kids in it. And that, that really is a, we're stabilizing kids to help them prepare for the next level. If you look at, you know, detention, those numbers fluctuate depending on how many referrals come in. Homeless program, served, I'd say, an average of 220 over the last five years, or identified, I should say. And more statistics, I can, I can get those for you too. I do know one statistic onsite is that we had 25% of our kids onsite, so that's 25% of 130 are school-age parents, so they're parenting. At least one. And about 15% of our population is, is identified special education.
Commissioner Hamakboyle?
Well, you know, I go back to the Dark Ages. So I remember when McKinley was an elementary school. I taught at Lowes Creek, that no longer exists. But does the facility still meet your needs? Because I know it's retrofitted, and, you know, if you had your dreams with, with, is, that's probably one of our oldest buildings. Does it fit your needs?
Yeah, and, oh, an old conversation. We've always, you know, we know what we have at McKinley, and then what it, what we have works, until someone says, well, what about what you just said about the private space? You need to do some counseling. So, yeah, there's, there's things that we could use, but right now, it's working for us. Definitely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Can you send out that prezzy you were talking about?
Yeah.
We do, I'm sure everybody would want to.
I will, the, the one on homelessness? Yeah, it's, I will.
Okay, okay. Okay, do we have any other, next on the agenda is request for future agenda items? Do we have any requests for any agenda items? Okay, next time then, all right. Chris did, and not now, all right. A foundation report on the next agenda. Yes, yes, I'll put that on, thank you. No other business, so I'll take a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hamakboyle, second somewhere? I need a second, second from Commissioner Zhang. All those in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
This program was recorded and presented by Chippewa Valley Community Television. Chippewa Valley Community Television is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, you can contact us by calling 715-839-5067, or on the web at www.cbcTV.org.